I know with commercial vehicles, there are DOT regulations. And it's my understanding that from an insurance standpoint, in order for it to be covered by our insurance, basically, if the vehicle is in motion, the driver has to be on the clock. And so if it's, that wouldn't qualify if it's personal use. Under... 1 dot 1 F, page 115, about right in the middle. It references in our accidents policy. That would need to be updated. We don't have an accidents policy per se. We have a safe driving policy in the handbook. So I just want to make sure that language is cleaned up so that it is an appropriate reference. And there's also, oh, I'm gonna have you scroll just a little bit to the top. Under D three, I don't think we have a searches policy. So either we, it's not in the handbook. So we would have to either create one or remove that reference.
I'm just gonna ask a dumb question. What do you mean by searches?
Can you just can have the ability to search the vehicle?
Oh, okay. Oh, that part. Okay.
That's it.
The original discussion, as we mentioned last time, was to have council consider the option for city maintenance to take this vehicle home for lunch. Recommended to create a resolution to do that. We could just not have a policy, another option, and just say we could allow for city maintenance to take the vehicle home for lunch as we have in the past. Either way, it's a pleasure, counsel.
If we do move forward with a policy, I would recommend that we incorporate it into the personnel handbook as that is something that employees signed off on. So then it's not a standalone policy. And then one thing we had talked about with snow removal and a few other things is putting cameras in the vehicles, in all city vehicles, including fire trucks. Have we looked into that any further? So this would be dash cams, both forward facing to catch traffic as well as cap facing.
It's an expensive cost. Yes, we have looked into it, but it is very expensive. Both on the side of, you know, you're looking at the cameras. You're gonna run about 12,000. And then you're looking at the yearly fee for the sending up to the cloud kind of thing, about 450 a year.
I have several friends that drive commercially. And I will, just for council's information, say that cameras have saved their CDL multiple times. It is a safeguard that I think we should consider. Pleasure of the council on resolution 2024-8.
Do we need to go through and work out each one of those details or how do we do that? I think some of them might, I, personally, I think most of this is really good.
Oh, it's a good start. Like I said.
Only if it's like anything else.
Some of it's just clean up.
How to sign policy. You've just gotta keep tweaking it and something new.
I think it's a really good start. I, no, I'm a drunk.
Please, Joe. I'm just thinking.
I interrupted his train.
While he's thinking. I would want to leave the council in there just for the simple fact that if the admin position is vacant or they're unavailable, then you could have like council, or mayor, whoever. So.
Do we genericize it to supervisor? Because that is also defined in the handbook.
Yeah, as the mayor.
No, not in handbook. That's in ordinance.
Correct. So supervisor would encompass city administrator as well?
Yes. So city administrator supervises public works or city maintenance and deputy clerk. And then mayor supervises city administrator and down. So that would cover if city administrator is out.
But you are correct. It's originally intention of having the city council and city administrator was in the effect in the event that city council or city administrator is gone or and or incapacitated in some way that could.
So I would say supervisor to make sure that it covers everyone top down. Chris is out.
Chris is gone for emergency surgery or something, you know.
Depends on surf vacations, you know, in Maui.
So how are you gonna change that in there? Leave it just as it is?
Just say, at any time at the discretion of a supervisor. Because it is in the handbook, it's supernatural. It'll be implied that it is a city employee supervisor.
I know in 1.0, in general policy, the second line is, it's got parentheses, the city in parentheses. Am I missing something? Is this, and city administrator have?
It's just defining the city. Anything that's below that, it's saying that. Anything that says city is city of Auburn, not.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wondered. Curious about.
As for clarification on emergency, there's so many, so many things that are unforeseen that can fall under the umbrella of emergency. And also, emergency is somewhat subjective term. But it's, I hate to use it, but when you see it type situation, if we leave it as emergency, then it wouldn't cover that. Not put additional strain on the city employee to say, oh, is this an emergency? Can I, is this, you know, if they're under that kind of stress, they don't probably need to wonder, is this one of the emergencies that was mentioned in the handbook? That's correct. So yeah, anytime, for me, anything where it says city council or city administrator as it pertains to the approval of something, changing that to a supervisor, that would be the only amendment that I would wanna see to this before I would move to pass to adopt it.
Well, we do need to straighten out the references to policy because we don't have an accidents policy or a searches policy.
Okay.
Or we could remove those from the.
Well, we have safe driving, so I think that one's easy to fix. We don't have searches. I will say, from a DOT perspective, we have to remove the word personal. And I would almost say we put in that they must be on the clock while they're driving the vehicle. And that's fine. If you're in transit to lunch, like you're still on the clock. It's, it could be that, and probably should be the way it is because we all know this, how things work around here. You get halfway home, you know, on your personal break and something happens and you're either turning back around or, you know, going and handling it and you're technically off the clock. Especially now, the clocks, by clock, I mean the app on your phone. Again, it is my understanding, I've not confirmed this, but it is my understanding from a DOT and insurance perspective that in short, in order for the insurance to be effective, it is to be on city time, not necessarily city property. So it's, this isn't the having it at the house, but when in transit.
So changing it to supervisor must be on clock, on transit. Searches and personnel, personal or personnel?
Personal. There are references to it's being used for personal reasons, personal time. That would all have to be removed.
And replaced with?
Nothing. Removed. It has to be on city time.
All right, that's fine.
I would.
And then delete, under D three, delete searches?
Yeah. Which it's already in the general policy that it can be searched at any time. So I don't think that's necessary.
So not delete it?
Yes, delete it. It's not necessary to include it as.
It's already in there.
My only other question around, I mean, the normal business hours. Well, I know, again, to your point around emergencies, like yes, we can keep it generic for the position this is intended, which is the city maintenance. Is it more normal operating hours? Because, I mean, they're not manning an office. Or am I splitting hairs on that one? You couldn't tell me I'm splitting.
Well, I was kinda thinking something similar as in operating hours, not necessarily normal business hours.
Because it could be at 3 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, if it's a snowstorm or something like that, I mean.
Well, I'll use the example, this actually did happen, of the vehicle, you know, it was being used to basically go get the, plow out the fire department. So the fire department in that big snowstorm. And so, you know, that is an example of after operating hours, after normal hours, that is an emergency. I don't, I caution against putting yourself in a position where you don't have flexibility. And then, like you were saying, we're questioning whether or not it was an emergency or not, and then someone's calling you out on it or anything like that. It should be, that part should be left general to not, to avoid that issue.
And there's going to be a level of
Trust.
Trust already because you're hiring this person to use our city equipment. And certainly, if they are, you know, if they are using the vehicle improperly, they're probably doing some other things improperly too that can just as easily be documented so that they can be dismissed.
Can I qualify some of my, why I'm asking for clarification?
Go ahead.
It is not out of distrust for the employees. It's the public perception and the public concern that I know will come up. So let me give you an example. The truck is sitting at the school. Is that for business? So we, without a policy, and the truck is seen, whether it be in someone's driveway or, you know, those types of things. Now the truck's at school. Are they picking up a sick kid? Or are they there for business? With a policy, we can say, you can't have a passenger. So in accordance with our policy, well, we see it at his house. Yep, and according to our policy, it's allowed to be there during normal operating slash business hours. We could put a slash there. Maybe that helps. I don't know. So that, it's more the saving all of us, the headache and the heartache of Mac being questioned constantly. There's a lot of eyes in this town.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just wanna make sure that we're giving him what he needs so that it's, if someone comes to us, it is defensible and we can be like, no, he's operating within the policy. Whereas if we leave it as it is now, where there is no policy, then it's perception, right? So we can, again, I may be splitting hairs on the normal business hours. I just don't wanna lock him into that means normal, like, city hall hours because we've basically not set a schedule for that position. I want him to have the flexibility to work when he needs to.
Yeah, it could be 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, midnight.
Yeah.
2:00 in the morning, you know, depending on what he's doing, you know. Water main break, you know.
And there is no.
Well, that wouldn't fall into normal, but.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I'm saying. That'll be normal because he's working snowstorm or whatever, you know, different times, so. But you do have to be, they join me. We've had employees before not use it right. And, you know, brought up a lot of questions. You know, and Guy did, Guy did a wonderful job with it. He, I see him go home every day, every noon. But it was, it was right on the money. You could tell he was gonna come out there at 12:30. He was back in the truck and gone, you know. So there was no conflict, but.
Which, again, it could sit there for an hour. I don't care. But when in the vehicle, on city time, I think that's the difference here there of what, to ensure it's being used for city purposes. Then if it's sitting at his home, if it's sitting at someone else's home, there's no like, oh, he's on the clock and he's, no, no, no. Not necessarily he's got the right to have the vehicle. But when he's in it, he's on the clock. Or, you know, they see it at his home and now all of a sudden it's at ours. Oh, he had to go, he had to go pick something up. Yeah, well, for the city. The only time he's allowed in the truck is when he's on the clock.
Yeah, right. Yep. You've had all the changes we need to look at?
So are we keeping normal business hours or?
During, are to be used during necessary hours to perform the duties.
Take out normal until say business hours, which could be anything.
Did I catch everything?
That was my feedback. I was saying, what else I didn't?
I'm, you know, I'm fighting with it. I mean, I think it's good. It gives it some direction.
So we're looking for a motion then? Or do you see some other things that you want to discuss in here?
I mean, there's, there's some grammar stuff for that. I just think that does not change any intent. I would just, with the change from council or administrator to supervisor, I just, I would personally like to make sure that it reads the way it's intended. So if council is okay with it, approving the take-home vehicle policy, approving mayor and city administrator to finalize the take-home vehicle policy without changing intent. I don't know if you're comfortable with that or if you wanna capture all the changes we made and let it go that way. I will leave that up to you all.
Well, I think we oughta, you know, at least two or three of us get together and do it and make sure it's correct. When we get, when we put it in there so we don't have to redo it again.
So do we want to just table this until another meeting? When we have an opportunity to go through?
I guess if we're not changing the intent and we're just cleaning up some of the language.
Here's, it is my recommendation. I would, I would table it that way council's approving the actual policy. But then tonight, grant permission in lieu of a policy for Mac to take the truck home during his lunch hours. It's short term. So as long as there's council action that protects him.
I move that we allow Mac to take the truck home in lieu of not having a policy set. Allow him to take home the truck during lunch. And then should we have a separate motion to table?
Yes. Can we say until a policy is put in place?
Until a policy is put in place.
I'm gonna rephrase that for you. So I have a motion for Myers to allow city maintenance Mac to take a city truck home during lunch hours in lieu of the take-home vehicle policy until such policy is put in place.
I accept that motion as stated.
Motion by Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Now, yes, can we?
I'd like to move that we table resolution 2024-8 in order to work on language and then bring it to the next meeting.
Table it until May? It is helpful to have them. Motion by Myers to table resolution 2024-8 to allow for us to work on the language until the May 9th meeting. Do I have a second? Did I, wait, pause. Did I capture that correctly? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rosenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right.
Just move the one dollar.
Yes. I'm taking a brief recess.
I have a question. Is that, say, is that specific to the truck? You say I'm out on a job in the side-by-side. Is that? And I'm running around town. Is that okay?
City, yes. Good, good. Hopefully, we'll turn it around by next month and.
Sorry. Yeah, I live on Long Street. Yeah.
In your house, I get turned over a few times before you have.
I've heard that from a lot of people, yeah.
Boom, boom, boom.
I know. You know, I went to go over an hour. This is nothing like the old meetings, though. Ran out of juice?
It's out of juice. Let's go on.
You've been creeping online anyway, so. He knows how to fix them.
I clicked.
Not enough. New business, item L, discuss P and Z committee. So we're on page 117 of your packet. So this is a request to remove inactive or non-responsive planning and zoning members. We're currently not fulfilling their roles with the commission. I will say we've got some, some things coming up that are gonna require assistance from planning and zoning. We would like to primarily be looking at the comprehensive plan. I've asked Chris to, they really should be meeting regularly. Like, that's, that's the intention of that committee. Right now, it's kinda just been super ad hoc when we meet, needed their, like with the alleyways thing, like that's, we pull them together for those things. But you'll actually notice in the ordinance that they're supposed to be giving us an annual report. And this, the comprehensive plan is part of our capital improvement plan that we put together. And I think it's, we need to be looking at that too. But it's, it's a committee that we would like to have more activity and action and pre-planning. I don't like being reactive. So I'd rather be proactive and they can help us do that. So with that, we need members that are gonna be responsive. So there are two listed here. One's term is up in 2027, the other in 2028. As the governing body that appointed these individuals, you are the ones that can also remove them from office. I will note that according to Iowa Code 372.15, any removal must be submitted by written order with the reasons for removal. So we'll need to be specific with that. And these individuals have to be given an option for, to request a public hearing. So there is a little process we have to go through.
And for the people who are on this list, non-responsive, is that the reason that we're looking at them? Have they?
Multiple phone calls, multiple emails, no response.
Okay.
And this is over a month or two or what kind of? Man, during the last three months.
Has anybody other than Chris tried to reach out to these individuals?
Jim Carver said that he had tried to reach out to them. Told me to check up at the school. No response there.
And so what is the process that we're following for this meeting? Is it just a discussion? Are we requesting, you're requesting a motion for? Are we requesting, you're requesting a motion for their removal due to inactivity, non responsiveness?
I would say due to what we need to start happening soon. I mean, I'll leave it up to the council, but we need people in place sooner rather than later. Because I don't even, they're supposed to have a chairperson and a secretary, and I don't even have that in place. They're also supposed to be approving Platts, anything that's in a two-mile radius of us. I mean-
The last two chairpeople got elected to council, so it's kind of all yours fault. The blame is on that side of the table. All right. 372.15, removal of appointees reads, "Except as otherwise provided by state or city law, all persons appointed to city office may be removed by the officer or body making the appointment. Every such removal shall be by written order. The order shall give the reasons. Be filed in the office of the city clerk, and a copy shall be sent by certified mail to the persons removed, who, upon request filed with the clerk within 30 days of the date of mailing, shall be granted a public hearing before the council on all issues connected with the removal. The hearing shall be held within 30 days of the date the request is filed, unless the person removed requests a later date." That's all I know about the process.
So we would need to make a motion to remove these people, and then he'll draft a letter that will go certified mail to these inactive members. And then at that point, the action is in their court. If they do not request a hearing, then next month, then their positions are officially vacated, then?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay.
And it does say for vacancies caused by resignation or otherwise. I feel like this would then fall within otherwise, so.
Because we can't start looking for anybody until we get rid of them.
Exactly.
Right. There currently is no vacancy because within that ordinance, we don't specify, like, council's got attendance requirements at meetings and those types of things. None of that is, unfortunately, in that one. So we don't have grounds other than just this body choosing to appoint.
Will I make a motion then?
Hit me.
We'll make a motion to, just like on top of the page here, to remove the following inactive and non-responsive planning and zoning commission's members who are currently not fulfilling their roles with the planning and zoning commission. And name the two names.
We can say them. Greg Laramer and Josh Hendrickson.
Yeah, Greg Laramer and Josh Hendrickson. With their dates, you know, the 2027 and 2028 left to fill.
And is that what you would want in the written notice?
No, we don't need the dates in there.
No, no, the inactive, non-responsive, and not fulfilling their roles, is that what you would?
I think. It gives it a reason why we're doing it.
I mean, they have the opportunity to come back and say, yeah, I want it. It's not like-
Right.
I would request that your motion say to send written notice.
Oh, okay. To send a written notice to the two? Yep.
So I have a motion by Rosenberg to remove the following inactive, non-responsive planning and zoning commission members who are currently not fulfilling their roles within the planning and zoning commission, Greg Laramer and Josh Hendrickson, who will be served with written notice of such removal and reasons for removal. Motion by Rosenberg. So I have a second. Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Here it is. New business M, asphalt paving project. So you have notes. Apparently Lynn County is going to be coming in on Burnett Station Road. Looks like sometime this summer, possibly. We've been notified, I know we've partnered with them in the past. It's cheaper, they've already got everything mobilized, and they're, you know, in the area, and so they tend to cut us a deal. I do think, I mean, we have a 2080 agreement, but I do think historically we've done one specific to the project. And so that would still have to be executed. It looks like the ask for tonight is just whether or not we are interested in participating with their project. The question I have is, I know there's not a, it's not a lot of city street between the railroad right-of-way and the county line. But in there is the bridge. What's our timeline for having to replace the bridge?
Eight years. And they're quoting right now hundreds, about thousands of that.
That's only going to go up.
Yeah.
But better to have it done sooner than later.
So I guess I question whether we repave at $50,000 if we're going to, I don't know how long, how long does asphalt last?
Well, that only comes to the bridge or the railroad tracks, right?
So it would go over, it's from the county line, go across railroad tracks, so basically we'd be paving over the bridge.
But absolutely, try to shorten it.
That's, the county line is basically the bridge.
Oh, that, oh, okay.
I mean, I don't drive that way every day. Is that road in that bad a shape?
I would defer. I don't go that way very often.
I don't think so.
Iowa North area, there's not hardly any cracks, or there's no potholes.
Unless you're, I think they're just tabled. Unless you're waiting to-
They always just offer if they're going to be in the area. So it's just-
It's just a courtesy.
It saves us from having to, you know, they're already mobilized in here. So I know they've done it in the past. I think when, oh, when they were out on Roosevelt, they offered to come all the way into town. So I think this was just a, are we interested?
Well, I'm saying I'm surprised they're going to pave it, because that road isn't that bad. But I don't, I don't think it is, but-
Overachievers they are.
Yeah, I think.
What that portion of, but 45 to 50, isn't that what it is? Our portion of-
Do we need to acknowledge the county that was just not interested in that?
Probably.
I think that'd be the way to go.
Okay, you want to, you want to motion that?
I will, we contact Lynn County Secretary of Road Department and inform them we will not be-
Participating?
Participating in the resurfacing from, of Burnett Station Road within city limits.
Motion by Trump. Good? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sukka. Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, page 120. Whew, bottom of the packet, holy, well, okay. This is a quote for, we talked last meeting about the lighted crosswalk signs. So this is something that the school had approached me. Mac did a great job of reaching out, getting all the specifics, figuring out what's going on. There is only one quote because this is purchasing, this is the unit that a lot of municipalities use. We've got good, it comes highly recommended. We are able to purchase directly from the manufacturer. So while we have quotes from, like, Uline and a few other places, they are more expensive, and it's the exact same unit. So this is basically a direct purchase. So what this gets us is, it's the push-button operated. It is solar, so we will provide the poles. And when it says, you know, it says, say, customer to provide the square posts and the static signs, those are your crosswalk signs. We get them cheaper ourselves than ordering them with the unit. And so we had them, Mac had them take that off. So it gets you basically a push-button operation on either side of the road. So, and then the little LEDs underneath the sign will flash. Just gives traffic an indication that someone is looking to cross.
For clarification, where would these, where would this crosswalk?
Getting to that, what I want to point out on the quote, because it was a little confusing, and Matt got clarification for us because he noticed it says times two. This basically is for one crosswalk. So the 6,325 is for one intersection. I am requesting two intersections be covered with these, with these crosswalk lights. So the first is pretty straightforward. It is near the school, by the elementary, where they, so near the parking lot entrance, there is already an existing crosswalk. So we would just place the signs. It would, the one on the school side would be mounted on the concrete of, like, their parking area.
That will be midway in the block rather than at the end of the street by the school parking lot, which used to be the old Evan Church?
Correct. This will be, yes, the middle of the parking lot. I can bring up on that.
Right now, all that is is a cut in the sidewalk that crosses there, right?
It's a marked crosswalk.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, yeah, it's in the middle of the block.
Yes. And then it crosses over.
Not typically where we have some, they have a crosswalk guard now.
It is actually. Before school, they can put a crossing guard out there because the kids come over and go to lefties. After school, the crossing guard tends to be down by, like, the bus lane where they pull in.
I'd pull the map up on that.
Yep, so, right there, you can see the existing crosswalk. So that's the first- By the element.
East end of the element.
Oh, okay, but it's signed here.
Yeah, it's by the Apple sign.
Yeah, okay.
So that is location number one. Location number two is going to be on the corner here by City Hall. That will require us to pour an approach for that. So do a curb cut and pour an approach so that they can cross. You will see it's a little bit blurry, but there's a manhole right here that bumps up a little bit. So the other side would, the sign on this side would be approximately right here within our right-of-way. So we would basically have, like, an angle from this landing.
Whole thing moved so we can see further east? On the other direction? Towards the-
This is the bus barn.
Yeah, so we can see closer in there by the bus barn. So where's our property line that we're talking about?
Well, it's right, it's city right-of-way. It's not property line. It's just within, where normally there would be a sidewalk. That has, it's all driveway, but we have right-of-way, and it gets to, like, right here.
Okay. And the driveway is owned by the school, and the bus bars are owned by-
No, this is street. This is what we just paved. So we own till about right there. That's actually city.
So can you actually physically touch where one end is going to be and the other end going to be?
Yep, absolutely. So the first one would be on this side. There's a manhole right here. We put it just behind that. And then I'm recommending off of this sidewalk before an approach. And so the other one would be here on the sidewalk. And they would, they would cross at that approach.
So when I see kids come out of the school-
So this is-
They're, they're cutting across here. They don't come down here and go to the track.
Right.
They're coming across there.
But then you run into railroad issues, don't you?
Well, we don't. That was another potential, my concern with up here. Because same, we could pour an approach that cuts across here. While, yes, we own it with the semi-traffic in and out of there, I don't, I don't know if I want to risk our sign getting run into. And there is, see the shadow, there is a pole right here. So you're going to limit, there's a telephone pole. So I think you would have limited visibility. So this just fell, and to your point, Dave, with the other one up further on Roosevelt, they can cross Roosevelt safely there to get to this crosswalk as well. So I did talk to the school. I met with superintendent Deibel. They're on, they're on board with both of those locations. And actually, for them, during events, they can now use the baseball field for additional parking because there'd be a safe crossing to get people over to the school building.
So you're looking at $12,000?
Yes, that is correct.
And that take care of them?
No.
How much are we talking about for those? Like, the curb cut there and the extra, is that going to amount to anything?
We don't have that priced out yet, so that's what I was, if I get a motion for this, I would ask to get approval to get quotes for that. But that's pretty minimal concrete work. It would have to be, there has been some question about ADA. I checked with ADA. It's only within the scope of the project. So that approach itself would have to be ADA compliant.
Just that?
Yes.
Lasts four feet.
We would not have to change the rest of the sidewalk. The same was done when we redid Muthheart. You can see the approaches all around, including the one that crosses Main, was updated to be ADA, but the rest of the sidewalk did not have to be touched.
My concern with that manhole where that sign's at, something will run it over? I mean, it's-
It bumps up there, so I, it's almost got a curb. Because I haven't, I walked it, I haven't, I don't necessarily have to get approval tonight. We are hoping to purchase these this fiscal year so we can, we can circle back on placement. We did also talk, Chris, if you could take the map a little bit north, please. So the other north.
Other way.
The other discussion was this existing crosswalk. That is where we ran into railroad. Because they have a transfer station thingy, like, right here. And the sidewalk would have to zigzag. So what I've also mentioned, these are solar. We could move them. So if we get it placed here for right now, there's nothing, nothing hurt with an extra approach. And if down the road we want to work on that as a project, we could always move it further north.
Wouldn't it be possible to make it movable for this spot right here? We would. Do like we do the speed signs, where we would just put it on a movable base? That would be right there. Then you wouldn't have to drill in, and you wouldn't also have to, I'm not, I'm not talking for the one that's on the sidewalk. I mean, you could do both, but I'm not talking the one on the sidewalk. I'm talking over here.
I don't know if that alleviates the concern about it getting hit. If you look at it, it bumps up. I don't think it's going to be, this almost, this almost forms a sidewalk, so the traveled, like, roadway is about where those vehicles are.
The only time they're going to use that is for softball, or football.
They use it quite a bit.
In the, during nice weather, they use it.
They would use it a lot more.
They use it for PE classes, correct. Not in the winter time.
Where, where, yeah, okay. You could take it out of there in winter time. What kind of feedback have you had from school owners?
They are supportive.
But they don't want, they're supportive, but they don't want to put any weight towards it?
No. I mean, it's, we operate the streets. It is our responsibility. This is a pedestrian safety thing, so maybe not. Well, here's the other thing. Other than coming all the way down to the corner, there is no safe ADA crossing to get to that side of the street.
Crossing the road, no.
Yeah. So, and we do have, we have wheelchair-bound in town, so for them to get to the bank, to, I mean, really to safely cross, they go all the way down to the intersection and cross back up, so. I mean, traffic control is, is our responsibility, so.
So we probably have another $5,000 putting approaches in and-
Oh, God, I'm-
We're only talking one approach, right? Just one approach?
Approach is really just the part that you step out to. It's going to be a couple hundred dollars. It won't be-
The spot right here.
It's not going to be anything.
That's spot right there.
You do, but that's not-
Four feet, and four feet long and four feet wide, yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to be but a couple. And we'll get quotes for that, so I'm not even asking-
Because I was thinking, I didn't know if we could do something further down, because you were mentioning the bank, but then this is the most direct approach.
Right, yeah.
Unless we just put lines going to here, I mean, that's going to be our option.
It would be nice to have that sidewalk just continuing out to the curb and go across. Eight years approach.
Yeah, the approach would be ADA. I don't think we're going to need more than $500 at most. I've not gotten quotes, so that's part of the motion is we would get quotes for that work.
I mean, I'd be cement all this right here instead of just coming over here and being the most driven person.
Also that, too. We can just fill in the whole thing.
Fill in the whole thing, be done with it.
Because they are, it is almost going to have to be at a slight angle to get them to the right, to the right place on the other side. So they're not walking, otherwise it walks, if it goes at a 90-degree angle, they walk right into the manhole.
So we would just come out of streets?
We have sign budget. We have budget this fiscal year.
We have $50,000 for streets, yes.
Yes.
Till we have the money.
We do.
So if the council's in favor, and I'm looking for a motion to purchase the signs and pursue quotes for the concrete work. and pursue quotes for the concrete work, then we can discuss.
So, who does the installation here then?
We do. Right, sorry, I jumped on that question.
Yeah, the prices.
Huh?
The price includes me doing the installation.
Okay, that's what I was wondering here.
They don't give any support with it, it's just freight and the product.
It's just a four by four post basically?
They'm off to the two by two inch, the perforated sign posts, yeah.
Stop sign post?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's no big deal.
They're on.
Oh, I guess, yeah, yeah.
On top of those.
Well, they're covered under insurance in case somebody runs them over.
Yep, that is true. If you if you look at it in the daylight, it does bump up, I don't think it's anywhere that's gonna be traveled. I mean, intentionally, and stuff already always happens, but our poor fire hydrant's not bad.
The curb starts just past that storm sewer, just north that storm sewer and comes up south.
Pleasure of the council?
I move that we purchase the two signs for the crosswalks and pursue quotes for the approach on the sidewalk on the corner of Main and Roosevelt on the southwest side.
Did you state two signs?
I said two.
Can we do an amount on that when we get the multiplier?
Two crosswalks, signs for two crosswalks.
All right, if you'll allow me to restate, I have a motion from Myers for the purchase of two lighted crosswalk signs from Tapco for a total of twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents, as well as approval to pursue quotes for a sidewalk approach at the corner of Roosevelt and Main.
Could you read back the price on that again?
Twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Moved by Myers, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by West, any further discussion?
My only concern is, I wish the school would pay for part of it. I I just think that, you know.
Well, that's true, but like, nothing else, there's those are streets, we should be taking care of those things too. You know, and I walk around town enough that I, it's hard to get around some of these streets, yeah.
It provides safe crossing for all, I know it is in and around the school, but it's also those are the spots on our two main, main drags as well.
If you can get the kids to come down and use it, well, you know, that's probably the.
It's not perfect, but you know.
The two highly, more probably have the highest traffic count of any streets in town.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion carries. All right, review city clerk, deputy clerk job description. This is not in your packet, that's on me, I had a misunderstanding with Chris and I had him remove it because I thought we were good, and then I realized we weren't, and I said, put it back in, and it didn't make it back in the packet. So, that was a back and forth. Basically, all we're asking is, we've had the the three employees, we've had the structure in place for a while. We are seeing the value in having them, and for sure, the deputy clerk is one that was slightly more experimental on whether we had enough work, like how is that gonna work? And we are, we are definitely seeing the value of that position. I don't want to talk about Hannah in particular, because that'll come out during employee review, so this is really just around, oh, she's fantastic, by the way, so this is. So, we're we're talking about the position itself. The current pay range on the job description is thirteen dollars to eighteen dollars per hour. Again, we were learning into this, we didn't quite know what we needed, we are finding that it is essential to have someone that has customer service, can be comfortable with some more advanced, some of the accounting stuff, being in the systems, taking payments. It's more than just a warm body sitting in the office, and so we need to, in order, I believe, I might speak for you all, in order to attract and retain the best talent, let's focus on retain the best talent. That is probably not the the best pay range for us to be in, so.
How many hours does she work a weekend?
Thirty.
She's part-time and a thirty?
Yes.
She, well, yeah, six hours a day times four days.
Oh, so she's a twenty-four.
She's a twenty-four. She has worked a thirty-day week, but it's been very far and deep.
You can't go basically for twenty-four hours.
Right.
So, the recommendation is to move that pay range, again, it's currently at thirteen to eighteen dollars per hour. The recommendation is to move it to eighteen to twenty-four dollars per hour.
What rate is she at currently?
She's at eighteen dollars an hour, so we did bring her in at the last. She, yes. She came with a lot of experience. So, again, going to twenty-four doesn't mean that she goes to twenty-four, that again, that'll all come out when we have wage discussions in the coming months, but that gives us some leeway. We could potentially look at, you know, if we've got someone that's coming in as the city continues to grow and we need more of that full-time clerk, they have experience, they're gonna lean towards that. If they've got clerking experience, they're gonna lean towards that twenty-four dollars. So, part-time.
Technically, with others running around, another sneezy, I guess a figure would go in.
The other cities right now are capping at twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
So.
Is that full-time, part-time?
That's full-time.
Okay, so this would seem pretty appropriate, but.
Yes.
I look at thirteen, I think you make fifteen at McDonald's, I mean, I'm just, I'm just being.
My nephew's making seventeen at a McDonald's.
Things got crazy, so.
Well, she has skills, and and now that we're had her, she'd work.
So, this is, again, we'll we'll talk Hannah specifically in the coming months, but this is really from an investment in our people overall.
Retention, yes.
Retention and, you know, worst case, attraction, we've gotta be competitive, so.
So, we need a motion to amend that job description?
Yes, please.
I move we amend the deputy clerk's job description to a salary range of eighteen to twenty-four dollars per hour.
Motion by Trum.
Sure.
I've got a second from Myers, you're good, I was gonna, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion carries. All right, old business, City Park presentation.
That's why I was gonna show the batteries sort of more outside the holidays. I don't even know if it's connected anymore. City Park presentation. So, we're gonna go to the goals, general design, cost, timeline, summary. City of Armitas actively working to create a new green space area next to the fire department to promote town involvement, recreation, and community that go over the new park. Create synergy amongst the residents, provide space, relax the outdoors. The general design received was provided by Echar Green, and this is where we will have a large pavilion, we have bathrooms and a area for basically a small kitchen that will be basic, it will just have one sink with places to plug in crock pots, there will be grills. Outside that, we have a pickleball court that will go here, a small grain silo here, that'll be more like a band shelter, and then our corn climber activity here, which is more of both a centerpiece to make the park unique, but also something that can be used for two kids and adults. Looking at this park, we, Mac and I did go through and we eliminated some, a lot of the trees. We've talked a lot about what would we be able to grow, the native is like an area like this will have native on it, so it'll be attracting butterflies and that kind of a feature. The wellhouse, this will be where you're gonna have the generator in the back, so this is gonna be a fenced-off area. And then you have the pump there, that's to make it so folks aren't, you know, trampling on that area there. And then this pickleball court will have a fence around it, the reason these trees were eliminated here was to basically make it so that they don't shed on this area here, and we may eliminate this tree for the same reason. We've got, kind of got played by here when we get the engineer out. Here's an option to input in a slide, this would be a ground, what's called a ground slide. We're gonna have to basically see what we can do with this area, because there is limitation of how high we can raise this area, and that will be something that will be discussed with the engineer. So, this is kind of the specs and the concept for the van stand design. Now, this is a kit that's provided by AV Creative, the kit comes as one whole and then we get it. This actual design is not this, they gave you this as a placeholder. With the, they said the cost would be similar, but they are trying to get the final quotes for this, because it is custom on these these little things, but they said the price would be very similar. So, that's why I'm showing, demonstrating that. And this is what we're looking at for our pavilion, so again, you see the two bathrooms. This area would be the concession, I would like to see if they can put some sort of a wall or a closet here for any kind of sweeping, mopping, gel stuff.
What's the size of that?
That is forty-four by thirty.
Just the, that's overhanging too?
Here's some of the features that we'd have, we have a butterfly sculpture, those are very popular throughout the state of Iowa. There's like an entire society devoted to taking pictures with these things, you've gotta collect them all, that kind of thing. You know, we would be looking at elements of having two of these fountains that have the little dog bowls, and then there, which would be one by the pickleball courts and one by the pavilion, and then grills through in that area, most likely just two grills is what we're looking at right now. We have the picnic benches, we do have two benches already that we can move to that location that we have sitting out here right now, so that is an option, but if we needed to bring additional benches, we could. There is a physical climber, it's a rope climber for the kids. The understanding right now is we're just trying to try to pull the basics out of it, and if we want to add anything later, let's let the engineer leave and then we figure that out. That makes sense. All right, costs, so. Costs, let's me show that, hold on. I'm watching too much, sorry. Yeah, it's been walking on me. We're looking at a total, and I included the engineer as well as the contingency. We did not use, we didn't use contingency, we're not gonna use any of the contingency here for City Hall. So, keep in mind, we're we're gonna try to avoid using contingency, but with the engineering costs, we are looking at fifty-nine-five-three-seven along. And so, that does push us past the four fifty, which is what I said would probably be the base. And then looking at all of that, we'd be looking at a total cost of five hundred eighty-nine thousand four sixteen forty-one. Those are estimated costs.
That's where the ground slide and everything?
The ground slide is not included in these yet, because we have to, they have to look at the mechanics of that. Again, it's not like I'm not gonna say we're not gonna do it, it's, we have to look at the mechanics of that. The original price that they had, that HR Green presented, was eight hundred eighty-eight thousand. By using the kits, we reduce some of that, we can reduce a lot of our costs. Again, I tried multiple ways to try to get this so that we could split it up and with the kits and everything, and it's just, there's just no way we can do it. We will have to bring in an engineer.
How much of the concrete is included?
This concrete is only including the sidewalk and the concrete pads, so basically, you're looking at the sections here, this structure, this structure, and this structure, this is already, this is already part of, this is already here.
The beginning of the concrete, huh? I had talked to Chris too about, I mean, but you're saying concrete around the sidewalk.
It's ba, it's basically from where the concrete ended for the trail here.
But it doesn't include the parking.
No, parking is not, parking was an additional hundred some odd thousand dollars for that.
More. Now, the car parking on the north side of the fire station?
That's optional.
That would, could easily would be gravel?
Correct.
We did build in, you'll notice it says future bay. We we left space, the intention of setting up the fire station the way we did is in case we expand, so we left room for it and added bay.
And that's where like, you know, this is where we could put some of the playground equipment. It's in this area here, because it would be up, it coming here would be the bay, the future bay. That was what was, what we're talking about. Like I said, once I get, the next step is to get the engineer, that's kind of where.
I did talk to Chris, and I I I suggested with pickleball courts that you go with dyed cement instead of painted lines, because paint, you gotta sit there and redo it, redo it, redo it. Go with dyed cement, you don't have to worry about it. So, where are we sitting on an engineer?
I am going to this next convention this next week, I've talked to engineers at the managers convention that are interested. I am going this next week, I basically am bringing minus the costs. I am bringing this.
Okay.
As kind of a presentation for anybody that is interested. And then we will be putting out with the minutes that we are, we will be actively looking. So, we obtain the engineer in May, we're looking at, you know, building phase between June and September, then planting, you know, September, October, you know, for trees. Trees we could do as, there are multiple grants out there, we could do that as, when we've got an auger, we've got community support. That's where, part of these smaller details is where I'm using the park committee. And I'll and I'll start having those meetings after I get through this, to start deciding the little tiny details that go around this thing and seeing if I can get support from the community to help us some, you know, wherever we can.
What's the number to say?
Says creative, creativity of ABC, creative with their expertise, expertise of an engineer, we should be able to tame the vertical balance, create park environment for community enjoyment. Our team will become that city of our, that's part of the comfort.
I've asked you this before, and I'll ask you again, we need an engineer why?
Because no matter how many ways I try to slice this, I cannot get the vertical low enough in order for us to.
And the vertical limit is how much you want?
One hundred ninety-six thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no matter how many ways I try to slice this, and I tried a lot of ways to try to get costs down, I tried to get a lot of ways to get everything else down, it just was not, it just was not feasible. But, as I talked to one of the engineers. But as I talked to one of the engineers, they basically said you can write into the contract the work we're willing to do, which reduces our price.
Yeah.
And now I understand, though, that that also means that we have to bid our own price out for the work that we're doing. However, I looked at the fact that I don't think anybody's gonna be able to match our cost for labor. But who knows?
Well, yeah, for cheaper.
So at the moment, we just gotta get the engineer on board and go from there. So I will be researching.
And the sidewalk around there is, I've basically a four foot sidewalk, standard four foot standard base or whatever standard base is, it's kinda like that.
Um, we did go out, I don't know if those flags are still there.
Uh, some are.
Some.
Bad, everybody's pretty bad.
Yeah, we did go out and try to flag some of this so that you could kind of go out and kind of see where things were positioned. Because again, I wanted to line some of it up. Because this, I found out, is not one-hundred percent the scale.
Could you go back to where you picked out the extra trees?
Yeah. They originally quoted forty-five trees. We don't need that many trees.
Oh, they'll never hear no, that's that many.
Correct. And again, there is the, the factor of, you know, we're not buying brand new, we're not buying huge trees and trying to transplant them. Anybody that knows anything about Iowa's, if you do that, then you jeopardize the fact that the root system's not good enough.
Yeah.
And it won't survive a storm. So it's almost better to build a, a smaller tree growing up.
Yeah.
Yes, will that take, will that take a little while for a park to look exactly like this? It might. But it's the idea that, again, this green space is really what we want. And these pavilions so that we can then start doing things like, you know, little concerts or, you know.
Yep.
Everything out the.
The more trees you get, the more.
More clean up to have.
More clean up to have.
Right.
There you go.
You throw up a recycle bin.
That's what we need right now, yes.
Do you need any action?
I don't need any action.
Any other questions on the City Park presentation?
Thank you. Fun to see it come together.
Final comments. I will start to my right with Counselor Trump.
Nothing.
Counselor Bodenman?
Nothing.
Counselor S Cooper? Counselor West? Counselor Myers? With that, we confirm the date and time of the next meeting is this coming Monday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven PM. This is our special meeting for the FY twenty-five proposed property tax levy. It has been published in the paper, posted on our website, and posted on our social media. So we should be good to go. With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Rosenberg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by West. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned at nine fifty-nine PM.